Six thirty, we've called the meeting order. We do have a quorum present. Item one.
So Mayor, Council, tonight we have three items on your workshop session. So obviously, I think that's more than we can get through in thirty minutes, but I planned it so that we don't have any dead time. We've had some dead time at some prior meetings, so you'll likely go into your regular and have to come back to workshop. But I'd like to get through as much of it as we can during that first fifteen to twenty minutes. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Matt, and he's going to talk about salary survey. Salary survey is the basis for the budget. And so what he's going to be presenting tonight is what I'm going to attempt to get into the base budget for the proposed eighteen, nineteen budget. So we'll go over it with you tonight, and if you have questions, you can talk, call me, and obviously, we'll have our one-on-one meetings on budget, and we can talk about that.
Mayor Council, thank you for letting me speak to this evening. So we'll talk about compensation tonight. We'll include our salary survey results that we just got back, as well as what we're proposing for the upcoming plan year as far as changes to our pay plan goes. First thing to talk about those are internal and external equities. When we have a new position that we're looking at, we don't want to just say, we'll look at the job and say, this should probably pay forty-five, fifty thousand dollars. There is a method to it. We use a point factor analysis. And so what this does is we basically look at the knowledge, skills, and abilities required for the job, and it helps us determine where that job needs to fall in the pay plan. The external equity is very important, too, when we do our market analysis, especially for existing positions, because we want to make sure what we're paying our employees is competitive, because we are competing against all the other cities in the Metroplex with that same pool of employees. And so part of the directive two point seven point four says that HR department will conduct a salary survey once a year. And we reach out to our, well, we're part of a Metroplex survey group. And so that's made up of fourteen different cities in the Metroplex, and then our neighbors, Capel, Grapevine, and Flower Mountain, we reach out to them as well as one of our survey cities to get information on what they're currently paying. So the Metroplex group is nice. It's a centralized database where we keep all of our information, they do too, of our jobs, the salaries, all that information that helps us complete this survey. This is a listing, I won't read through them all, but of all the different survey cities. Again, Capel, Grapevine, Flower Mountain, the survey city just not part of that Metroplex group. So when we look at the general government positions, we want to look at each of the pay plans. So you've got your professional, your administrative, clerical, technical, your trades positions. We also look at the broad bands, so that your managers and your director level. And then we also do a survey for the appointed positions. That's a separate survey. We're actually in the middle of it right now, getting responses from all the cities. And so next month, we'll have the response back for the appointed positions. What we use, we call their benchmark positions that we look at. For example, on the professional pay plan, you've got a purchasing agent, librarians, planners. What they do here at the City of Louisville is essentially the same thing they do in any other city. That city may be larger, may have more citizens, it may have more employees, but the job itself is the same. And so it's a good apples-to-apples comparison. What we do is we take a benchmark position here, we look at the midpoint in that salary range, and we compare it to the midpoint of all those other cities' benchmark position. So we'll compare, see where we're at on that point. And then we'll take all the benchmark positions in that pay plan, we'll look at the average and compare ours, and that helps us decide if our pay plan needs to be adjusted that next year. If there is an adjustment, adjustment that we're proposing, it would go into effect October first. But remember, if there is a market adjustment, that's the salary range that moves, not all the employees. And so the only employees that are affected, so say the professional pay plan moves two percent, that, the salary changes, but only the people that fall below the new minimum will have a salary adjustment come October first. So it's really a small impact to the budget on the market. Another analysis we'll do, sometime we'll have to look at just an individual position. For example, we looked at the maintenance worker recently. When we see a position that has a high turnover rate, like the maintenance workers, since 2016, in October, we've had a fifty percent turnover, it's really difficult to recruit for that job and to retain the employees. You know, we've got the maintenance workers in several departments, parks, facilities, streets, ULM. So we want to make sure that if we're falling behind on salaries, or we're seeing that turnover, that we put a focus on this and make an adjustment if we need to. So our results for the salary survey, you can see the different pay plans. The professional pay plan and the trades were both two percent under what the market was, and then admin clerical and the technical pay plan was just one percent under the survey cities. And so that's what we'd be proposing, to bring up those percentages to become, to stay competitive. So market adjustment, that's one way to get a salary increase, again, doesn't affect a lot of employees. What does, though, for general government is your merit increase. So last year, Council approved a three percent increase, and that's what we're asking for again this year, is three percent. Employees, it's on an annual basis, based on your hire date or your last promotion. So you have your evaluation. If you met your standards in your work plan, you have your three percent. For place and fire, it's similar. We still reach out to the survey cities, but with place and fire, we actually look rank to rank in both of those areas, and we look at the maximum salaries at the top step. Reason we do that is because for the City of Louisville, we have seven steps for place and fire. Other cities may have less, they may have more, so you have to look at the top of range. If you remember, too, back in 2016, that was the first year that we started, so we normally bring people up to market, but then we did the additional two percent. We've done that the last couple of years, and that helps us stay competitive, because as soon as we move our, our pay, everybody else moves theirs, so we lag behind. So this year, with the police officers, the variance was a one point seven percent lag behind the rest of the, the market. So what we're proposing is bring them up to market plus additional two percent again this year. The average increase for the other police ranks was one point nine percent. Fire, close to the same thing. We're down about one point six percent compared to the rest of the market, so if we bring them up to market plus two percent, we'd be looking at a three point six percent increase. All the other fire ranks, the average was a two point five percent increase is what we're recommending. Then also, back in 2016, if you remember, we had a lot of openings with the police officer position. We're having a hard time filling those. And so what we put into place was a lateral transfer program. And so somebody who, before this, you worked for another department, you could have been an officer for fifteen years there. If you want to come to Louisville, you would have started down at step one. So that's might deter some people from wanting to come, make that switch to Louisville. By putting this in place, you can basically get compensated for that time that you spent somewhere else, because if you worked somewhere that had at least a population of fifty thousand, you're an officer there, or an entity that had at least a hundred police officers, like a DART, then you could come over here, you take that experience, and you could start somewhere in that range. And some of our officers even started at the step seven. Today, eight police, police officers have come through that program. So this certainly helped us. And you can see on the hiring statistics for the police officers, in fifteen, sixteen, sixteen, seventeen, we had a lot of new hires, but that's because that program was working, and we're bringing on new people. As of today, we do have six vacancies, but we continue this program as well.
I believe we had sixteen vacancies when we put it in place. Is that right?
Yes, correct. Of the, for the fire department, the statistics, you can see we had quite a few new hires in fifteen, sixteen. Their turnover's been really good. Right now, we have four vacancies. A lot of that's due to retirements, but with the new fire station opening in 2018, we're going to get additional eighteen. That is a lot of firefighters to hire. We've, I've already started testing. Hundred seventy-five people applied, sixty-two people actually tested. Of those, twenty-nine of them actually passed the physical, the essay, and the rapid panel interview. So we're seeing that we've only got twenty-nine people right now in the hopper, so we got a lot of people to hire. And so what we're proposing and we're looking at is possibly doing the same lateral transfer program for the fire department, because it works so well for the police, we would see the same for the fire department. This is just an idea. We don't have all the details. If this is something we move forward with, we definitely put together a committee within the fire department to hear from them on how do we want to implement this, and how would it look compared to the, the police department? But this would definitely help us with hiring that many firefighters. I like this slide. It's just easy to see. It's got all of our survey cities and what a police officer with the maximum pay is. The blue is what we currently pay. The green is what the average is for all the cities. And then the pink is what we're proposing, so that's your market plus your two percent. If we were to do market plus three percent, you can see it moves us up several positions. And so that's one thing we'll be looking at as well this year.
So Council, the way I would look at that is I would try to get the market plus two percent in the base budget. And probably that market plus three percent, I would put on your add-back list for further consideration by the Council. I'm not promising that at this point, because we are just starting the budget review process, but that's my thought process now. And what really worries me is I look at police, when I look at that list, didn't in current our closest neighbors are at the top. And so, you know, remember, when, when Matt's looking at this, everybody else's, their salaries are going to move too. And so even with market plus three percent, I can't really promise you where that's going to put us, but certainly, it's going to make us more competitive with those neighboring cities. But, but that would, I think, be a Council decision on your add-back.
Do we have any idea of what their turnover retention?
About your cities?
For, for like a Denton or Carrollton?
I don't, I can get that for you.
I think it probably depends.
I'd just be curious.
Maybe it's part of the report for you, if you'd like to have that.
But the one thing we did get a permission on recently, all of the other cities, since we've started adding, they just, our survey just went around recently, other cities were doing market plus three, market plus five, matching at the sixty-fifth percentile. All the other cities have implemented lateral. It's a good thing we got it in early. So, you know, that's what we all do, is learn from each other.
Right.
So I think that's why you see like that, the blue. When we showed you this last year, we were much higher, but everyone else moved, so it still put us down in the bottom piece, instead of even at that midpoint with the, the change. So we're, we're looking at that, too, to try to help us make the best decisions.
Sure, sure.
For the fire department, very similar. Certain salaries in the blue, and then the average is in the green, and the proposed with the market plus two percent is in the pink. But again, it's like they said, this is where it's at, the proposed, but if we're to look at these numbers after everybody changes, we're going to probably come right down to this area. And then if we did the market plus the three percent, that does move us up an additional spot for the firefighter. So one thing to mention on the police and fire, because they are, they have steps, they don't have merit increases. And so when they start here, they start at step one, and then each year on their anniversary, they take a step test in HR, and then they pass that, and they met their standards as a police or firefighter, they move to the next step. That increase is around four percent, but once you hit seven percent, you're, that, you're topped out. Or if you hit step seven, you're, you're done, you're topped out, unless you were to get a, a market increase. But one thing to mention, your firefighters, thirty-nine percent of them and thirty percent of police officers are eligible to move up to another step. So the majority of your place and fire here, they're already topped out. The upper ranks here with place and fire, they have just two steps, and then you move to that second step after your second year. So the broadband positions, again, that's your managers and directors. If we're looking at a new position, if we have an opening, we do look outside at other cities to see what they're paying, but a lot of times, they, an HR manager, for example, they, what they do here, the responsibilities can be totally different, they could do different things as a HR manager in Grapevine. And so we want to look internally. So we have an open manager position. We look to see what are other managers in the City of Louisville making. If somebody promotes from within, then they're going to get either what that job was posted at, or they'll get a five percent increase from what they're currently making, whichever is greater. And then, since they got a promotion, your anniversary date changes, and so a year from then, you'd be eligible for a merit increase. So in summary, on that base budget, again, what we're looking at for the pay plan increases is two percent for the professional and the trades, a one percent for your admin, clerical, and technical, and then a three percent for the merit. And then for police and fire, we'll do, we're asking for a three point seven percent market increase for police, three point six for the firefighters, and then again, on the unfunded list, that additional one percent. So that's what I had to note for compensation. Is there any questions?
Any questions? We both, all right? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, I'll be presenting on certificate of occupancies. And, and the requirements that go along with that. So as I start, what is a certificate of occupancy? Ultimately, in layman's terms, a certificate of occupancy is simply a document that identifies that a building or structure is suitable for occupancy. Why is a CO required? When new buildings are built, it's, it identifies that that building is built to today's most current standards. If we have renovations that occur, again, it's identifying any changes that have been made, are meeting those minimum requirements. It's a document that allows first preventers to know if any hazards exist in the building, how many people should be in there at, at a time, and allows them to know, you know, certain aspects of the building construction itself before they actually have to go into the building. And in a lot of cases, utility companies require a certificate of occupancy before they will establish any type of utilities, so they know that what they're fixing to make live with electricity or gas is safe to do so. Best practices overall in the region, certificate of occupancy is, are almost required for anything, whether it's a new building, a tenant name change, a new tenant moves in, a use changes from one to the next. And especially, the last bullet point I have down here, when a tenant name or ownership changes, it requires a certificate of occupancy. The language in our current ordinance, I want to point out, is located in our zoning ordinance. That presents some challenges. Anytime we have any building related, we have to go in front of P and Z before any changes can be made. Our particular ordinance also has some language in here in regarding, in regards to use of land and land use. The building code, the building code does not identify a certificate of occupancy to be utilized for land. It's meant for identifying that a structure is safe to occupy. The land use and the use of land and things of that nature are all taken care of through the zoning ordinance. New tenant registrations, currently, those new tenants, we're capturing through a process called new tenant registration. Unfortunately, as I mentioned, the building code does not mention new building registrations. We don't have an ordinance that requires new business registrations. And more importantly, as I, as I already said, it requires a certificate of occupancy, and this, our language only, also requires it when no building is present. And I want to also point out, for example, a new tenant moves out. I'm going to use a hypothetical. We have a Burger King. The Burger King moves out, McDonald's decides they're not going to make any changes, they move in. Well, they go through our new tenant change, our new tenant policy. We don't capture the new tenant information in regards to the building, the changes, who the actual occupants are, which are, is McDonald's. We don't have that information. Although we're capturing some of the information through the new tenant registration, we're not maintaining the information on the building itself. And that's part of the challenges of the way our current ordinance is written. First and foremost, the zoning ordinance. It's inside the zoning ordinance. It should be maintained and governed by the building code. And we're inconsistent with the region. The one thing I will say, that any city that we go to in our region requires a certificate of occupancy for tenant change, name change, ownership changes. Some of the recommended, recommendations we bring to you tonight is we'd like to first move it out of the zoning ordinance. Upon doing so, we'd like to remove some of the following language, especially the language in regards to land use and use of land and things that are actually done on properties that are taken care of through the zoning ordinance. And we would definitely like to add that when any tenant change or ownership change takes place, that certificate of occupancy requirement comes into play. And, and doing so, we'd also like to propose the following fee, which is in line with the survey cities, of our survey cities, the majority of them charge a fee of a hundred dollars. There are a few cities throughout that have an asterisk next to them. Those start at the amounts. Dallas, for instance, and I triple-checked that amount, they start at two eighty and move up from there. I do not propose that. I like to stay along, along the lines of the majority of cities and stay with the hundred dollar fee. Next steps, first and foremost, asking for your guidance, but as we move through these steps, we first and foremost have to go to planning and zoning with any changes we decide to make. Upon completion of going through planning and zoning, we would then bring all those recommendations that we have in the new ordinance language after we would reviewed it with legal, bring it to the, another council meeting at a later date. We'll formalize the process, having those things ready, so in the event that you decide to adopt the new language, it will just move forward from then, from then on. We'll coordinate with our first responders, fire department, and make sure that our process works seamlessly with everybody that's going to be involved. And finish there.
Council question?
Any questions?
Makes sense.
Do it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Thank you all very much.
So Mayor, you may want to go to the agenda now.
Okay, let's go, we can. Let's start with the invocation by Councilman Gilmore, followed by the pledge to the American Texas flag by Councilman Ferguson. Proclamation and presentation by Mayor Proton Williams. Then we're down to item one, public hearing. Anybody have anything on that? Item two, public hearing. Item three, public hearing.
This is the juvenile curfew ordinance, and this is the second hearing required for this ordinance. And I'd like Chief Kerbo to just talk a little bit, Brett asked a question at our last meeting. Chief and I had a subsequent conversation. I'd like him just to, to share some additional information.
Yeah, certainly. You know, first and foremost, it's just a good tool for us to be able to use, but not just for us, but also for parents. I've spoken to a number of parents who, they use the curfew to reinforce their house rules at home, make sure their kids, you know, were in, in a reasonable time. So that's a real good benefit there. And my concern about us not continuing this, we'd be like an island, we'd be the only one in the area that doesn't have a juvenile curfew ordinance, so does that attract other juveniles from other surrounding communities who want to come here and hang out there for hours?
And Chief, we, we talked about the variation in the number every year. I think that's kind of what your question got to.
Well, it's one of those things, we don't always have to write a citation to get, get compliance. You know, many times, we can take the juvenile home, talk to the parents. That satisfies us from the standpoint of having, making contact with them. I noticed that in that last year, that last full calendar year, one of our gang officers wrote like five tickets. So I, you're obviously using it as a tool to get the attention of gang members.
So did that help?
Item five.
So Council, this is really a request that came from employees as we went through our values implementation, and it's one that we've actually struggled with dealing with in the past, and so I think it's a good clarification. It allows, if in a situation where we deem it too dangerous for employees to get to work, or we need to close operations earlier, it gives them a different form of leave to be able to utilize. There's been some concern that, that they would only be able to use vacation or comp time, so this would actually allow a conversion of sick leave. And really, all employees have approved some sick leave, and so we think that is more fair and equitable to employees.
Item six. Item seven. Regular hearing. Item eight.
So on this item, Stacy will talk with you about the park development fee in the workshop when we come back. However, I'm going to pull this item off and delay it to the next meeting. Number one, because a couple of the changes that needed to be made didn't get submitted in the version that's in your backup. So we're going to bring that back at the next meeting.
Can I go back to side, Mayor?
Yep.
That, you're coming southbound on McGee. You're coming down a hill and around a corner when you hit that church. So to my mind, that's, you know, your sight lines are really not that great coming south.
You know, I think a lot of it has to do with the hours of operation of the church. I mean, if you look at the study, that's what they were focused on, because churches operate Sunday morning and Wednesday nights.
Did they consider that the church is about to put in an entire new school?
Yes, that, that's really why they were looking.
Because it won't be just Sundays now. Building a school.
So David, that's a good question.
I believe they did. I mean, that was the purpose of the study. I don't, I'm not certain that it's going to look on site distance issues or things of that nature. I think they were looking at traffic numbers and, you know, how many people are coming into how the driveways at peak times versus at peak, you know, during, trying to build at peak times and versus the traffic on the streets.
And I'm sorry for bringing this up now. I should have asked on Thursday or Friday, but as, as I'm chewing through this.
Is there any reason we could delay, David, delay this item and then go back and talk to the engineering firm that conducted the study and bring that back?
I just, I'm getting, getting ate up when schools, and especially private schools, have, you know, access issues, and we're, we're going to have another issue here if that wasn't addressed in the survey.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Now, they've got a huge parking lot, and hopefully, they can work to route and use it effectively, but.
Well, and that may be part of it. I mean, if they know what their site circulation is going to be, that some driveways they use more than others for the school.
Yeah.
Good question. Let, let us, if Council wants, I would ask you to pull this item, and we'll bring it back to you at the next meeting after we have further discussion.
Yeah.
Or table.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hernan.
I have received everybody's recommendations, so I'd be happy to read that off, and then whoever wants to have a motion.
Thank you. Anybody have any opposition to that? None? Okay. Item ten. Mr. Speaker.
Yeah. So the, the Home Office leadership team reached out, and since we have, I think, the chief fallen off, they had asked for an additional representative from the City of Louisville. They'd actually asked for Prat and/or a council member. So I've reached out to Prat to see what her thought was on, on staff, simply because of what she's doing. I think it'd be a phenomenal integration, because she just, she's got the resources and understands that part of our community best. So that's why.
Can you handle that one?
I can.
Okay.
As long as Council's okay with it.
Anybody have any opposition to that? Okay. Okay, anything else? We do have a closed session tonight.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, let's reconvene at seven o'clock in the council chamber.
Called at tonight's meeting of the Louisville City Council to order. First item of business is the invocation given by Councilman Gilmore, followed by the pledge to the American and Texas flags by Councilman Ferguson.
Please join me in a moment of silence.
Please join me in. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you.
Next, we'll have the proclamation and presentation by Mayor Pro Tim Daniels.
I believe we have some gentlemen here in the audience. If y'all will come on up.
Okay, I'm going to read, we have a proclamation from the city first, and then I'm going to turn it over to these gentlemen. Whereas the people of the city of Louisville, Texas have great admiration and the utmost gratitude for all the men and women who have selfishly served their country and this community in the armed forces. And whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration in present use and was initially created as a badge of military merit by George Washington in 1782. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award or decoration made available to the common soldier and is specifically awarded to members of the United States Armed Forces who have been wounded or paid the ultimate sacrifice in combat with a declared enemy of the United States of America. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women from the city of Louisville, Texas, who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and the way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas many men and women in uniform have given their lives while serving in the armed forces. And whereas June 18th, 2018, has officially been designated as the day in the city of Louisville to remember and recognize veterans who are recipients of the Purple Heart Medal. Now therefore, Rudy Durham, mayor of the city of Louisville, on behalf of the Louisville City Council, do hereby proclaim city of Louisville, Texas, a Purple Heart City. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Okay. Good evening. My name is John Lundwitz, and I am the Department of Texas State Commander for the Military of the Purple Heart. I would like to thank Mayor Rudy Durham, city council members, citizens of Louisville, and all veterans who have served our country. What does it mean when a city is recognized as a Purple Heart City? When the city of Louisville, Texas is recognized, we are remembering and honoring all Purple Heart recipients, living or dead. We are honoring all veterans living in Louisville, Texas, that have served in the military. We're taking a moment to honor George Washington and his contribution to our country. We're using this moment to educate all citizens of Louisville of the sacrifice of your veterans and remind them to thank them for their service. Last thing I'll leave you with is, we have a chapter called Chapter 1513. It was named for a Bible verse, John 1513. I feel it's very fitting for those who have served and been in combat and returned. The verse states, "In greater love hath no man than that a man lay down his life for his friends." Again, we thank you for this. I'm just wondering, I wonder if we could get some pictures, I guess.
Go ahead.
This is the city's proclamation for most.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Thank you all for reaching out. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll get back here anyway.
Once everybody in here.
All right. Come on, Donna.
Come on, sit in there.
One, two. Can't see Donna. One, two, three.
Okay, thank you.
It was blocking me.
Yeah, that's yours right there for me. Okay. Thank you, sir.
Public hearing number one. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change from townhouse two district to planned development townhouse two district with five variances and removal of deed restrictions on 9.49 acres located at the southeast corner of College Parkway and Summit Avenue. The applicant plans to develop 82 townhomes and is requesting removal of the existing deed restrictions and approval of five variances. One, to allow front entry. Two, to allow a gated community and private streets maintained by the HOA. Three, to allow public utilities under private street pavement where the HOA responsible for the cost of the side, street sidewalk repairs due to maintenance of the public utilities. Four, to reduce the intersection spacing from 120 feet between the fireside lane and College Parkway intersection and the College Parkway and Summit Avenue intersection. And five, to allow for an ornamental tubular steel fins along the east boundary of the site. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of four, I'm sorry, of six to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance, associated variances, and removal of deed restrictions as set forth in the caption above. We have Richard Lukey, Planning Director, and Steve Leonard from Leonard Development both available to address any questions.
Anyone?
I have a couple of questions, if that's okay. Mr. Leonard? If you wouldn't mind, just kind of giving us a little description of the property, what kind of price points you guys are looking at, and some of the challenges, as well as some of the opportunities you see in this particular property.
Sure. This is a unique property in that it obviously had a older development on it that was built, constructed about three quarters of the way through. So there's existing sewer lines, water lines installed. There's also a street that was roughly 75% complete on it, and it was designed for 33 single-family detached homes. So we came in with a townhome product, which would change to 82 attached townhome product. We would keep the streets private. The biggest issue is that it's been sitting out there for quite a while, that there's some issues on the sewer line. So we've worked with your staff to redesign the sewer system to, in essence, abandon and place the vast majority of what's out there in the ground and run a new sewer line out back of curb. And that's probably the biggest logistic. We didn't want to go in there cutting the street up into Swiss cheese, quite honestly, to put in the new taps and to adjust it for our new lot layout. So that was the biggest issue on the development side. So we've worked with staff on that, that it would be HOA-owned streets, and we would also gate both entrances. Initially, the entrance along College was exit-only to be gated from a setback from the existing intersection of College and, mine's gone blank on the other street, and I apologize for that, but Summit, I'm sorry, on Summit. So on that northern entrance, there's not enough of a setback. So we worked with the builder on that, and we decided to go ahead and gate the entire project so it would be private streets with gated community. On the product side, townhomes would be starting roughly 1,700 square feet going up into the mid-2,000 square footage-wise. Price range would be somewhere in the high 200s going up into the mid-3s, and that'll still flex a little bit as they're designing their product. We don't, we anticipate getting the first development action, which will be regrading the site started in the early fall, and we're hoping to have it on the ground and ready to go by first quarter of next year where they can start selling homes, constructing homes at that point.
I need to get your name and address for the record.
Sure. Steve Leonard, Leonard Development, 520 Central Parkway East, Suite 104, Plano, 75074.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Motion to close public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Motion to close, here a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Any discussion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 9.49 acres out of the Joel Summer Survey Abstract Number 1323, legally described as lots 1 through 14, 15X Block A, lots 1 through 17, 18X Block B, lots 1, 2, 3X Block C, Lot 1X Block D. Fireside Village Edition, located at the southeast corner of College Parkway and Summit Avenue, from townhouse two district zoning to planned development townhouse two district zoning. Correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest in general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing, sorry, public hearing number two. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from single-family residential district to general business district on 4.03 acres located at 715 North Mill Street. An existing business is looking to consolidate its retail, office, and showroom operations at this location. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Available for questions is Planning Director Richard Lukey.
Okay. No other speakers? Okay. Have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning approximately 9.49 acres out of the Joel Summer Survey Abstract Number 1323, legally described as lots 1 through 14, 15X Block A, lots 1 through 17, 18X Block B, lots 1, 2, 3X Block C, Lot 1X Block D. Fireside Village Edition, located at the southeast corner of College Parkway and Summit Avenue, from townhouse two district zoning to planned development townhouse two district zoning. Correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest in general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Public hearing, sorry, public hearing number two. Consideration of an ordinance granting a zone change request from single-family residential district to general business district on 4.03 acres located at 715 North Mill Street. An existing business is looking to consolidate its retail, office, and showroom operations at this location. P&amp;Z recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption. Available for questions is Planning Director Richard Lukey.
Okay. No other speakers? Okay. Have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Counselor?
This is an ordinance of the Louisville City Council amending the zoning ordinance by rezoning an approximately 4.038 acre tract of land out of the JW King Survey Abstract Number 696, located at 715 North Mill Street, from single-family residential district zoning to general business district zoning. Correcting the official zoning map, preserving all other portions of the zoning ordinance, determining that the public interest in general welfare demand the zoning change and amendment therein made, providing for repealer severability, a penalty and an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item three.
Consideration of, number three, public hearing. Consideration of the Louisville Juvenile Curfew Ordinance and consideration of a resolution to continue the current ordinance. This is the second public hearing. The recommendation is that the city council conduct the public hearing and approve a resolution to continue the current ordinance.
Okay. Is anyone here to speak? Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
You have a second?
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second to close the public hearing? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Visitor Citizen Forum. At this time, any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the council. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Mayor have no cards?
Thank you. Consent agenda.
All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary. Mayor have received no cards?
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion and a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item seven. Consideration of a variance to Section 6-103E on 19.9 acres located at the northwest corner of Valley Ridge Boulevard and McGee Lane. First Baptist Church has seven driveways along the frontage of McGee Lane and Valley Ridge Boulevard, none of which have deceleration lanes. However, a traffic impact analysis submitted to the city shows that during peak traffic times, the church does not have a negative impact on the abutting roadways. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variance as set forth in the caption. Available for questions is City Engineer David Salmon, Wayne, and both Wayne Cotton and Curtis Grant with First Baptist Church of Louisville.
Okay. Is there any comments on this?
Mayor, I'm going to ask that we table this one. I didn't, I didn't get clarity with the review, since there, it looks to be adding a school that's going to be adding some different traffic loads than what the church would actually be.
Okay. If staff would get with the, if y'all haven't already, to get with the church representatives here and...
City Attorney, do we need a specific date to table this, too?
Otherwise you're killing it.
So the next meeting? Okay, so let's table it to our next, July 2nd.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Counselor? I got off there here. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Item eight.
Consideration of an ordinance amending Chapter Six by making provisions for a park fee and other related requirements and amending Section 2-201 by amending the park development fee rate. Based on an evaluation of current level of service and the estimated population growth, staff recommends amending the ordinance to include a parkland dedication requirement, a cash-in-lie-of-land option, and increasing the park development fee to reflect the cost of improving the park system to accommodate the recreation needs of the community. The recommendation is that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption.
Okay. City manager, do you have something on this?
Yes, Mayor, I'm asking that you table this to the next meeting. There were some items that were left out of the ordinance that was in your backup, and so we need to bring that back for further review.
Move to table. Till July 2nd.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to table until July 2nd. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Agenda item nine. Discussion and consideration of appointments to various city boards, commissions, committees. The recommendation is that the city council proceed with the appointment process to the various city boards, commissions, and committees. I'd be happy to read, you've all contacted me with who you'd like appointed, I'd be happy to read that for you all.
Okay, go ahead.
Animal Services Advisory Committee, Denise Jeffrey to place number two, Ethel Strother to place number four, and Jeannie Cool to place number six. Arts Advisory Board, Al DeBerry to place number two, Sarah Hicks to place number four, Dr. Tracy Gardner-Pettaway to place number six, Ken Lannan to place number eight. Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee, Eric Page to place number two, Denise Shepherd to place number four, Audra Sclaminski to place number six. Louisville Housing Finance Corporation, Sheila Taylor Clark to place number two, Mary E. Smith to place number four. Library Board, Jennifer Lindy to place number two, Jean Ferguson to place number four, Rosario Kyler to place number six. Oil and Gas Advisory Board, Jennifer Whitaker to place number two. Place number four will remain vacant. Kathy Stock to place number six, and place number five will remain vacant. Old Town Design Review Committee, Amanda Ferguson, place number two, Jack Miller to place number four. Park Board, William Shaw to place number two, John Dalvik to place number four, James Collier to place number six, Casey Kirk Dunn to place number eight. Planning and Zoning Commission, William Meredith to place number one, Mary Ellen Mixka to place number three, Karen Locke to place number five, James Davis to place number seven. Anters number one, Francesca Al Whaley to place number two, Kelly Strokes to place number four, and at this time, place number three will remain vacant. Ters number two, Francesca Al Whaley to place number two, Kelly Strokes to place number Ters number two, Philip Huffines to place number two, John Land to place number four. Zoning Board of Adjustments, Antonio Galazi to place number two, Douglas Hicks to place number four, Audra Klemensky to alternate number two. Lewisville Twenty Twenty Five Advisory Board, Nika Koos Akapala to place number two, Amanda Ferguson to place number four, Kristen Green to place number six, and place, and Karen Locke to place number eight. The places that remain vacant will continue to search for ap, for appointees for those boards.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I want to thank all the people that have been, uh, reappointed, who've been appointed for the first time, and all the other ones that are still willing to serve on these committees, and we do appreciate their time and effort in this. Thank you. Adam ten?
Consideration of appointment to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team. The City of Lewisville appoints two members of the Denton County Homelessness, Homelessness Leadership Team, a council member and a city staff member or member of the community. A vacancy exists in the city staff member, member, member of the community position. Neighborhood Services Coordinator Prith Patel has expressed an interest in serving. The recommendation is that the city council consider appointment of Prith Patel to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team.
Move to appoint Prith Patel to the Denton County Homelessness Leadership Team?
Do we have a motion and a second? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay, uh, next item is reports. I'm going to start with you, Nika. Do you have anything? Okay.
Mayor and council, I have the pleasure of introducing Jason Moore. He is our new Economic Development Manager. Jason comes to us from Richland Hills where he was an Assistant City Manager, uh, with a lot of departments under his purview, including parks, economic development, planning, tons of other ones. So, he brings a lot of experience to the city. Uh, before that, he was in North Richland Hills. Again, uh, primarily dealing with planning and parks, so, uh, one of his areas of expertise is, are those two areas which are very tied to economic development. Uh, we're very happy to have him here, and nobody more than me, since we've been understaffed. And, uh, so, the next time you see a project you don't like, blame him, not me. Jason, would you like to?
Uh, Mayor and Council, good evening. I'd just like to say I'm, I'm very excited about this opportunity, and I look forward to working with you all.
Okay, welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Stacy?
Mayor, councilmembers, park fans, I just want to invite everybody out to the Senior Activity Center. This Thursday at six o'clock, we're going to start the process of master planning the future Valley, uh, Vista Nature Park. So, we're asking everybody to come out and give us their ideas and see how we can incorporate that into the plan. So, hopefully, this fall, we can go for a big grant to get that started.
Good. Okay, chief? Does she have, no, chief? Got to hear it. Mayor, the lights, uh, just over a foot below the conservation pool level. Brett?
Nothing, Mayor.
Nothing, Mayor. TJ?
Mayor, it's, uh, summertime, and I'm going to encourage everybody, if they have a web browser handy, handy, to go to library dot city of Lewisville dot com. And don't ever let your kids get away with saying, "I'm bored, I've got nothing to do," because the library is completely jam-packed with activities this summer. I'd specifically encourage folks to come check out The Hive. Uh, there are lots of educational opportunities to come learn how to, uh, 3D print, how to use a laser cutter, how to, how to use all the new tools. I am particularly interested in the embroidery class that is coming up, so you may see me there. Um, with that, uh, I'll leave the table. Thank you.
Good. City Manager?
I have a, uh, very exciting announcement, too. In fact, we did a press release today to this effect. So, as everyone knows, our long-term, uh, time police chief is retiring, the first of September, and we are promoting Kevin Dever, uh, to be our new police chief. Kevin, would you stand so everyone can see you and stare at you? Uh, the chief will continue to be our chief, uh, through September, uh, but, uh, Kevin will be taking over the realms at, uh, the reins at the end of, uh, August.
Okay, congratulations. Do what? I didn't do anything. Okay, uh, Festa Theater presented by DFW Play Group on June twenty-third. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce's, uh, Women's Leading Business Conference and Expo is on June twenty-eighth this year. Uh, Sounds of Lewisville on June nineteenth, Dave Matthews Tribute Band called Warehouse, and on June twenty-sixth, Vegas Night with Elvis. Uh, acoustic jam on Fridays always, uh, I mention that frequently, art pop-ups in the plaza on Saturdays, Pilates in the plaza Thursdays and Saturdays, yoga in the plaza on Wednesdays. We have a couple of art exhibits, uh, that are going to open, um, John Koch's solo exhibit and, uh, members of the Black and White exhibit. Those both open on June twenty-third in the MCL Grand Gallery, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, Counselor Troyer?
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Okay, Counselor? Okay, Julie. Greg, getting another election under your belt, so, okay. Officers, thanks for your service to the community. You want to read the closed session, Julie?
Can we go back to park development fee? We need to finish the workshop.
Okay, uh, okay, first, hold on a second, Julie. We're going to go into close, uh, excuse me, we're going to go back into our workshop and finish it up, then we will, uh, go into closed session and, uh, in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D.
We're not there yet.
We're not going to do that?
After you go back into...
I can't just continue it right now? Okay, forget what I just said. We're going to go into, uh, workshop.
Sorry, Mayor. New process.
Yeah.
Sorry.
I thought it was going to work.
I almost let go of the door, and I realized you were coming, so then I stopped. I almost fell over, but I would have done that for you two.
Thank you, Billy.
I did. It was, no.
And no Mr. Goodbar?
No, nasty.
I bet you like raisins in your chocolate.
Oh, that's right.
He just likes the born. He just liked the fresh one, right?
Caramonti or something up here?
Because you got stuff up on your door.
No, it's a...
Because it's on your door on Friday afternoon.
No, that makes my daughter feel bad. Let's go get started with the workshop.
All right, uh, mayor, council park fans, uh, just a reminder, we're working on the park development fees. Um, and earlier this year in March, we passed the, uh, update to the Parks Master Plan. And in that, um, plan, and we identified areas, uh, within the city limits that we are deficient of, of parks. Especially in these, in these hot areas and the orange areas where people live more than a ten-minute walk to a park, but we don't have a park generally in the area. There was also a list of, uh, proposed action steps and, and projects to address some of those deficiencies in, uh, with updating the current park system, but also adding parks, uh, in the form of community parks, some pocket parks, and specialty parks. And that list, if you added it up, would cost us about forty-five million dollars to execute over five to ten years. Uh, one of the recommendations was also that we look at the park development fee and reevaluate how we, we calculate it. And working with the Parks Board, we came up with a suggestion to update, uh, the, the, the fee, which currently is seven hundred fifty dollars per dwelling unit. So, if a hundred, uh, unit plant, uh, planned development comes in, uh, we charge seven hundred fifty dollars for each one of those units. The recommendation that we're making to, to, uh, for improving the, the development fee is to add a horizontal component or a dedication requirement based on our current level of service for residents. So, if we want to keep pace with what our projected population growth is for the number of acres that we provide, over the next, uh, five to fifteen years, we need to add three acres of parkland for a hundred of dwelling units that are coming in based on what our average per, um, average number of people who live in our dwelling units. Um, so, if, if a hundred dwelling units were proposed, we would ask them to, to give us three acres of property to use as a park. However, in some cases, taking parkland isn't the best for the city nor the development. And we would offer a money in lieu of, or cash in lieu of option that we would base on the market price per acre. We're proposing instead of every time there's a development, we go out and get, uh, a, um, land appraisal that we use general areas of town to come up with a value for what a acre would be to develop in that area to use for that. And then we would have a third-party land appraiser to help us establish that amount, um, every three years. So, that would be your horizontal portion of the fee, of the development fee, you, our capacity to go get land or improve stuff that we have. And then we would, we need, continue, need to need a development fee to build vertically. So, once we have this property to add amenities to it, um, and this fee should be, um, based on what the construction of park elements would be for that three acres of land, so to speak. It should be, um, based on those general costs, and we're proposing that we increase that to a thousand dollars per dwelling unit based on what current prices are to develop park, um, amenities, whether it be a playground, parking lots, um, pavilions, landscaping, and the like. But one of the changes that we'd also like to, um, propose is that instead of the, um, fee being collected at the time that someone's, uh, filing for a building permit, that it's at the time that a plat, the plat happens. Just for, um, planning purposes on our side, we get it, and we know that we're going to be able to use it immediately to, to improve parks in that area or buy it, or when it comes in with the building units like we have right now, it takes a long time sometimes, and so that kind of liability is waiting out there for us to, to get it. Um, sorry, I built all these neat little things. Um, can I go back? Okay. So, just wanted to give an example of what it would be like. If out in the northwest, uh, east Lu, northwest or northeast Lewisville, someone was coming in with a hundred and fifty planned dwelling units, we would need four point five acres from them um, in, in parkland dedication in order to meet our ratio that we had established. If we decided that wasn't, if we didn't want parkland in that area, we would go out and do, uh, you know, use our, our, um, estimated value of an acre there. I put fifty thousand dollars for this example. And so, we would collect two hundred twenty-five thousand in cash in lieu of, um, fees there. But then we would also have our, uh, development requirement of a thousand dollars per unit. So, we would collect a hundred and fifty there so we could go and, and build vertically. And so, the possible payment, if we didn't take land, would be three hundred seventy-five thousand. We would also have some options, that there might be some land that we want, but not all of it, and so we can negotiate with the developer there. So, that's just a, uh, just one that's out there. So, one that, uh, development that has occurred recently where, we applied the formula, would be the Lakewood Hills Development, which is out on the northeast side of town towards the Castle Hills area. Well, you'll note and remember that on our map, we are park deficient out on that side of, of town. So, they had two hundred sixty units there. We would require seven point eight acres of land out of that development to, uh, to meet our requirement. If we did not, um, take the land and we use the average of fifty thousand, we take three hundred ninety thousand, um, and we'd also collect the two sixty, um, for the park development. Now, what we would use this for is perhaps, uh, hitting on our need for a neighborhood or community park in that area, working with the developer for park and trail connectivity on that side of town. If you're a member of our Parks Master Plan, we have a lot of trails that still need to be built out there. As opposed to right now, we've only collected the seven fifty per unit. So, uh, as I talked a little bit earlier, is one of the litmus tests for, uh, the, um, legality of a, um, park development or dedication ordinance is that it helps you maintain a current level of service. The ordinances that have been, have been written and that have survived judicial scrutiny have been the ones that maintain a, a current level of service. You can kind of see from our seventeen, uh, cities who, who have them, they have varying ratios depending on what their current level of service is and how they want to get to it. Capel, Denton, Flower Mound, Fort Worth, and, uh, McKinney are, all do have an ordinance that is similar to the one that we are, um, proposing, however, based on what their need for property is. Flower Mound, I spoke to them, um, about some of the projects that they've had come up over the last, uh, two to three years. Their market value for it, uh, an acre has ranged for, from forty-four thousand dollars per acre to a hundred eighty thousand dollars per acre, depending on what area of town that they have, um, seen the development. And I think that's why it's important to make sure that we have a, a market value that's set on general areas and not just say blanket, here's what we're going to charge throughout the city. So, uh, like I said, everybody does it just a little bit differently. Capel created theirs after their original, uh, parkland dedication was challenged, and they went back and redid it this way in the manner that we've asked, asking for a, uh, parkland dedication or a cash in lieu and a park development fee that were based on market value for cash in lieu and what it actually would cost them to build, uh, for an acre of land.
Can you go ahead and tell me what the challenge was? What, what was challenged?
What was challenged?
Methodology.
Was the methodology. Like, how did they come up with it? Some people have done the, um... Some people have done the, well, let's see what our neighbors do, and don't have any basis for how that actually helps you maintain your current level of service. Does that, does that answer your question?
Can't be just a market analysis, kind of like an impact fee, where you have to have a prescribed methodology.
Progressional.
Right.
Stacy.
Yes, sir.
One question, is there a review component in this ordinance where we go back and review this every few years? Because our service, as we build a more service area, it'll have to change.
Yes, sir. Every five years, I'm supposed to bring a report, and every year, we are supposed to look and recalculate our development fee, our vertical, is what.
Okay. I just saw that potentially as a challenge going forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So, what I hear you saying in all of this is that these fees maintain the level of service. So if I add 100 people, it maintains the level we have today, but it does not fill the gap of where we would like to be, right? It can't be used, it's not being used to catch up.
Right.
If we feel we're already deficient.
Bless you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. The legal system hasn't caught up with the idea of the 10-minute walk to a park yet. It's, we're still on the current level of service. But this is, this does help us fill a lot of the gap that will occur as the population grows. I think we're thinking that by 2020, we'll add 62 million people, and that's how we should figure out the ratio.
So, the biggest question I had when I read through this was, I looked at Carrollton and Plano, and it says they require dedication, so obviously you can do that. The concern is that somebody would come in and go, sure, I'll give you, I'll give you some acreage here, you can have my, you know, detention pond, mosquito farm, and
Right.
There, I got rid of that thing, and I'm happy. And so, is there not a way to, for the city to have the first decision-making power and saying, you have to, you, in your situation, you have to, you know, don't give us land, I don't need land, I need money, or give me land, I need land, I don't need your money?
Yes. Part of the way that we've written it is that we have the, after we look at their original, their first submittal, we decide if that fits in with our plan and will work well. If we say it won't work, sorry, we want cash in lieu. There is a capacity that wetlands can count for 50% of the requirement, because there might be a time, place that we want that, that we'd like to attract, you know, water fowl, whatever, to the area, and it would enhance what we're trying to do. But yes, we have the first review. For instance, if there are two developments coming in, or there's going to be multiple phases, rather than having a whole bunch of little pocket parks, I'd like it to be, you know, all contiguous in one area, so that those, all those developments could enjoy it, and it limits our maintenance responsibilities, you know, and how we do that, and helps us create some economy of scale there. So yes, sir, it's in there.
Good.
And this just kind of goes on, as it's the intent that the cost of the new, the park system to maintain that current level of service comes with the new residents, not necessarily burdening the residents that are already paying for it. And so, and one of the things I wanted to make sure is, when I was talking to a developer about these potential changes, they were a little worried that the cost of their, the cash in lieu of land value would be based, like, on what they pay for a commercial piece of property. It's not. It's going to be based on residential, which is what parks are stationed at. So, our next steps would be, when this comes back before you, to adopt the ordinance. As soon as we do that, we'll create the, we'll work with the appraiser to do the market analysis for that per acre cost, and then we'll have an annual review of the construction and development costs for the budget preparation each year. We'll bring that as part of the budget process.
I'll take two.
Questions?
Is there any concern, I mean, it seems like this puts us at the top of pricing, or near the top, you know, right next to, like, Flower Mound, as far as the top. Any concern that this could hurt development?
There are some concerns, but I do think, just like we have in other cases with our fees, we're going to do with some developments, negotiation. We'll have economic development agreements, which could be partially waived. So we would have to work with that. I have some real concerns written in Old Town. I think that would be one area we'd have to be really sensitive. Of course, we have a lot of park needs in Old Town, too, so there's a balance.
Any questions?
Any other questions? What do we do next?
That's all we can, Mayor. We'll bring this back to you the next minute.
Now we go out there and close that, and then go back here for the last session.
Can we do the, right here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're now going to go into executive session. Okay, we'll reconvene back into regular session. Is there any action to be taken?
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager or her designee to sign all documents necessary to sell approximately 3.668 acres of real property situated at the AG King Survey Abstract Number 698 in the city of Louisville, Denton County, Texas, and being all of lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, Block 17 of Keely Addition, in addition to the city of Louisville, Denton County, Texas, according to the plat thereof, recorded in Volume 1, Page 5 of the plat records of Denton County, Texas, and being all that, all of that certain tract of land conveyed to Jim Emmett Stockard, as described by deed recorded in Volume 489, Page 684 of the deed of records of Denton County, Texas, and being all of that tract of land conveyed to J.E. Stockard, as described in deed recorded in Volume 720, Page 969, deed records of Denton County, Texas, and being all of that certain tract of land conveyed to J.W. Stockard, as described by deed recorded in Volume 250, Page 40, deed records of Denton County, Texas, to Trinsec Acquisition Company, LLC, for $1.517, $891,000, with a 120-day inspection period.
We have a motion to second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Any other action?
Move to adjourn. Second.
To adjourn, second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, say nay. We are adjourned. Good night.